Welcome. Before we begin this special session honoring Elizabeth Bishop, I must first acknowledge several sources which have made parts of this evening possible. First, Miss Bishop's poetry reading has been graciously sponsored by two sources: poets and writers, a part of the New York State Council on the Arts and the Modern Language Association. Secondly, the performance of "A Mirror on Which to Dwell", composed by Elliot Carter and performed tonight by Speculum Musica with Susan Weiner as soloist, is made possible by three sources: the New York State Council on the Arts, Meet the Composer, and finally by an anonymous source which contributed a very generous grant in order to make the musical performance this evening possible. I am sure that all of us here wish to thank these sources for their funding. Then there are three other announcements. The soloist for the evening, Susan Weiner, has requested that no one smoke in the hall during the entire evening. I repeat, no one can smoke in the hall. She will not sing if there's smoke in the hall. Would you please be kind enough to honor her request? As you may know, Miss Bishop's newest and quite beautiful volume of poetry, published about two weeks ago entitled Geography Three, has been on sale at this convention in the Farrar, Strauss, and Giroux booth number eighty in the Hilton Hotel. What's funny? And also at all the other bookstores in the city. Some of you who have purchased the work may wish for Miss Bishop to inscribe your copy of the book tonight. She has kindly consented to be available as long as necessary at the end of the entire program at the front of this hall for this purpose. Third, I must announce that the concluding paper of the evening will be that of Ashley Brown. Although the program lists the participation of Howard Moss, Mr. Moss withdrew from the session in November. Following Ashley Brown's paper, there will be a ten-minute intermission for the musicians to assemble themselves. I will return and introduce the composer and the musicians, and then the music will begin. That's at the end of the evening. At this time, I introduce to you Professor Ashley Brown of the University of South Carolina, who has known Elizabeth Bishop for many years, both in Brazil and in the United States. He will in turn introduce Miss Bishop, Professor Brown.
I don't think that Miss Bishop really needs very much of an introduction, and what I'd like to do is get away with what the President of Harvard has said to have done on the occasion when she read a five-bit a caper poem there. What I'd like to do is do what the President of Harvard did when she read the five-bit a caper poem there, and all he said was, "Miss Bishop will now read the moose." Then he sat down, but I can't quite get away with that. And so I'll say that this has obviously been a great year for her. Early in the year, she was awarded the Nushthat Prize, which is given through the magazine Books Abroad in Oklahoma, the editor of which will tell us about it very shortly. Quite recently, of course, she's been elected to the American Academy of Arts and Letters, which is of course a great honor. And along the line, there have been other prizes, other readings, and today her book is officially published. I think all of us who've been friends and admirers, or just readers of her for many years, are very, very glad to see these public honors fall into place so magnificently all at once. And I suppose tonight is, in a sense, the climax of a great year all the way around. So let me introduce Miss Elizabeth Bishop now without any further comment.
I don't know how this microphone works. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me now? Well, I think I should first thank Miss Estes for all the work she has done. What? Put it down there. Now, is that better? I should thank Miss Sybil Estes because she's done so much work. And she has asked me to read one poem. It's a very old poem. It's called "Large Bad Picture." And she thought I must have meant the word "bad" ironically, but I didn't. I had to assure her several times it really was a very bad picture that the poem was about. This picture was painted by a great uncle of mine when he was fourteen years old. He had gone as a cabin boy on a ship sailing way up Labrador, and he wanted to be a painter. And so when he came back, he painted his memories of that part of the world. And I'll read this poem about his, one of his first pictures, and I'm going to read you another poem about one of his last pictures when he was quite an old man. "Remembering the Strait of Belle Isle or some northerly harbor of Labrador, before he became a schoolteacher, a great uncle painted a big picture. Receding for miles on either side into a flush, still sky are overhanging pale blue cliffs hundreds of feet high. Their bases threaded by little arches, the entrances to caves running in along the level of a bay masked by perfect waves. On the middle of that quiet flora sits a fleet of small, black ships, square-raked, sails furled, motionless; their spars like burnt matchsticks. And high above them, over the tall cliffs semi-translucent ranks, are scribbled hundreds of fine black birds hanging in ends and banks. One can hear their crying, crying, the only sound there is, except for occasional sighing, as a large aquatic animal breathes. In the pink light, the small red sun goes rolling, rolling, round and round and round at the same height, in perpetual sunset, comprehensive, consoling, while the ships consider it. Apparently they've reached their destination; it would be hard to say what brought them there, commerce or contemplation." And this same man, he became a painter in France and England, and he came back to visit his sister, my grandmother, before I was born. And I fell heir to a very small painting of his, and this poem, which is about thirty years newer than the last one, is written about that picture. It's just called a poem. "About the size of an old-style dollar bill, American or Canadian, mostly the same whites, gray-greens, and steel grays. This little painting, a sketch for a larger one, has never earned any money in its life. Useless and free, it has spent seventy years as a minor family relic, handed along collaterally to owners who looked at it sometimes or didn't bother to. It must be Nova Scotia; only there does one see gabled wooden houses painted that awful shade of brown. The other houses, the bits that show, are white: elm trees, low hills, a thin church steeple, that gray-blue wisp, or is it? In the foreground, a water meadow with some tiny cows, two brush-strokes each, but confidently cows; two minuscule white geese in the blue water, back-to-back, feeding, and a slanting stick. Up closer, a wild iris, white and yellow, fresh swiggle from the tube. The air is fresh and cold, cold early spring, clear as gray glass; a half-inch of blue sky below the steel-gray storm clouds. They were out of specialty. A speck-like bird is flying to the left, or is it a fly speck looking like a bird? Heavens, I recognize the place. I know it. It's behind, I can almost remember the farmer's name. His barn backed on that meadow. There it is, titanium-white, one-deb. The hint of steeple, filaments of brush hairs barely there, must be the Presbyterian Church. Would that be Miss Gillespie's house? Those particular geese and cows are naturally before my time. A sketch done in an hour, in one breath, once taken from a trunk and handed over. Would you like this? I'll probably never have room to hang these things again. Your Uncle George, no mind. My Uncle George, he'd be your great uncle, left them all with mother when he went back to England. You know, he was quite famous, an RA. I never knew him. We both knew this place, apparently, this literal, small, backwater, looked at it long enough to memorize it our years apart. How strange, and it's still love, or its memory is. It must have changed a lot. Our visions coincided." Visions is too serious a word. Our looks, two looks. "I copying from life and life itself. Life and the memory of it so compressed they've turned into each other, which is which. Life and the memory of it cramped, dim, on a piece of bristol board. Dim, but how alive, how touching in the tail. The little that we get for free, the little of our earthly trust, not much. About the size of our boughs along with theirs, the munching cows, the iris crisp and shivering, the water still standing from spring freshets, the yet-to-be-dismantled elms, the geese." This poem is called "In the Waiting Room." "In Worcester, Massachusetts, I went with Aunt Consuelo to keep her dentist's appointment. Sat and waited for her in the dentist's waiting room. It was winter. It got dark early. The waiting room was full of grown-up people, arctics and overcoats, lamps and magazines. My aunt was inside what seemed like a long time, and while I waited, I read the National Geographic, I could read, and carefully studied the photographs. The inside of a volcano, black and full of ashes. Then it was spilling over in rivulets of fire. Osa and Martin Johnson, dressed in riding breeches, laced boots and pith helmets. A dead man slung on a pole. 'Long pig,' the caption said. Babies with pointed heads wound round and round with string; black naked women with necks wound round and round with wire like the necks of light bulbs. Their breasts were horrifying. I read it right straight through. I was too shy to stop. And then I looked at the cover, the yellow margins, the date. Suddenly from inside came an o of pain," Aunt Consuelo's voice, not very loud or long. I wasn't at all surprised. Even then I knew she was a foolish, timid woman. I might have been embarrassed, but wasn't. What took me completely by surprise was that it was me, my voice in my mouth. Without thinking at all, I was my foolish aunt. I, we, were falling, falling, our eyes glued to the cover of the National Geographic, February nineteen eighteen. I said to myself, 'Three days, and you'll be seven years old.' I was saying it to stop the sensation of falling off the round, turning world into cold, blue-black space. But I felt you are an I. You are an Elizabeth. You're one of them. Why should I be one too? I scarcely dared to look to see what it was I was. I gave a sidelong glance. I couldn't look any higher, at shadowy gray knees, trousers and skirts and boots and different pairs of hands lying under the lamps. I knew that nothing stranger had ever happened. Nothing stranger could ever happen. Why should I be my aunt, or me, or anyone? What similarities? Boots, hands, the family voice I felt in my throat, or even the National Geographic and those awful hanging breasts held us all together or made us all just one? How, I didn't know any word for it, how unlikely. How would I come to be here, like them, and overhear a cry of pain? It could have got loud and worse, but hadn't. The waiting room was bright and too hot. It was sliding beneath a big black wave, another and another. Then I was back in it. The war was on. Outside, in Worcester, Massachusetts, were night and slush and cold, and it was still the fifth of February nineteen eighteen." I'll read a poem called "The End of March", and this was written, as it began, as sort of a joke, a thank-you note, to two friends of mine who have a house in Duckspreek, John Malcolm Brennan and Bill Reed, because I said I wanted to buy this awful-looking house on the beach, and they thought it was very funny, so finally it turned into this poem. At least, I hope it's well. "It was cold and windy, scarce of the day to take a walk on that long beach. Everything was withdrawn as far as possible, indrawn. The tide far out, the ocean shrunken, sea-birds in ones or twos. The ruckety, icy offshore wind numbed our faces on one side, disrupted the formation of a lone flight of Canada geese, and blew back the low, inaudible rollers in upright, steely mist. The sky was darker than the water. It was the color of mutton-fat jade. Along the wet sand in rubber boots, we followed a track of big dog prints, so big they were more like lion prints. Then we came on lengths and lengths, endless, of wet, white string, looping up to the tide-line, down to the water, over and over. Finally they did end. A thick, white snarl, man-size, awash, rising on every wave, a sodden ghost, falling back sodden, giving up the ghost. A kite-string, but no kite. I wanted to get as far as my proto-dreamhouse, my crypto-dreamhouse, that crooked box set up on pilings, shingled green, a sort of artichoke of a house, but greener, boiled with bicarbonate of soda, protected from spring tides by a palisade of, are they railroad ties? Many things about this place are dubious. I'd like to retire there and do nothing, or nothing much, forever, in two bare rooms. Look through binoculars, read boring books, old, long, long books, and write down useless notes, talk to myself, in foggy days watch the droplets slipping heavy with light. At night, a grog al-american, I'd blaze it with a kitchen match, and lovely, diaphanous blue flame would waver, doubled in the window. There must be a stove. There is a chimney, a skew but braced with wires. An electricity, possibly, at least if the back and other wire limply leashes the whole affair to something off behind the dunes. A light to read by, perfect, but impossible. And that day the wind was much too cold even to get that far, and of course the house was boarded up. On the way back our faces froze on the other side. The sun came out for just a minute. For just a minute, set in their bezels of sand, the drab, damp, scattered stones were multicolored, and all those high enough threw out long shadows, individual shadows, then pulled them in again. They could have been teasing the lion sun, except that now he was behind them. A sun who'd walked the beach, the last low tide, making those big majestic paw prints, and perhaps had batted a kite out of the sky to play with." I'll read one more. It's fairly long, but it's easy to follow, I guess. This is called "Crusoe in England." "A new volcano has erupted, the papers say. Last week I was reading where some ship saw an island being born. At first a breath of steam, ten miles away, and then a black fleck, basil probably, rose in the mate's binoculars and caught on the horizon like a fly. They named it. But my poor old island, still unrediscovered, unrenamable. None of the books has ever got it right. Well, I had fifty-two miserable, small volcanoes. I could climb with a few slithery strides. Volcanoes dead as ash heaps. I used to sit on the edge of the highest one and count the others standing up, naked and leaden, with their heads blown off. I'd think that if they were the size I thought volcanoes should be, then I had become a giant. And if I had become a giant, I couldn't bear to think what size the goats and turtles were, or the gulls, or the overlapping rollers. A glittering hexagon of rollers, closing and closing in, but never quite, glittering and glittering, though the sky was mostly overcast. My island seemed to be a sort of cloud dump. All the hemispheres leftover clouds arrived and hung above the craters. Their parched throats were hot to touch. Was that why it rained so much? And why sometimes the whole place hissed? The turtles lumbered by, high-domed, hissing like tea kettles. And I'd have given years, or taken a few, for any sort of kettle, of course. The folds of lava running out the sea would hiss. I'd turn, and then they'd prove to be more turtles. The beaches were all lava, variegated, black, red, and white and gray. The marble colors made a fine display. And I had waterspouts, oh, half a dozen at a time, far out. They'd come and go, advancing and retreating, their heads in cloud, their feet in moving patches of scuffed-up white. Glass chimneys, flexible, attenuated, sacrodotal beings of glass. I watched the water spiral up in them like smoke. Beautiful, yes, but not much company. I often gave way to self-pity. Do I deserve this? I suppose I must. I wouldn't be here otherwise. Was there a moment when I actually chose this? I don't remember, but there could have been. What's wrong about self-pity, anyway? With my legs dangling down familiarly over a crater's edge, I told myself, pity should begin at home. So the more pity I felt, the more I felt at home. The sun set in the sea, the same odd sun rose from the sea, and there was one of it and one of me. The island had one kind of everything. One tree snail, a bright violet-blue with a thin shell, crept over everything, over the one variety of tree, a sooty scrub affair. Snail shells lay under these in drifts, and at a distance you'd swear that there were beds of irises. There was one kind of berry, a dark red. I tried it, one by one, and hours apart. Subacid and not bad, no ill effects. And so I made home brew. I'd drink the awful fizzy, stinging stuff that went straight to my head and play my homemade flute. I think it had the weirdest scale on earth. And dizzy hoop and dance among the goats. Homemade, homemade, but aren't we all? I felt a deep affection for the smallest of my island industries. No, not exactly, since the smallest was a miserable philosophy, because I didn't know enough. Why didn't I know enough of something, Greek drama or astronomy? The books I'd read were full of blanks. The poems? Well, I tried reciting to my iris beds. "They flash upon that enred eye which is the bliss." The bliss of what? One of the first things that I did when I got back was look it up. "The islands smelled goat and guano. The goats were white, so were the gulls. And both too tame, or else they thought I was a goat too, or a gull. Bah, 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 and shriek, 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 bah, shriek, bah. I still can't shake them from my ears. They're hurting now. The questioning shrieks, the equivocal replies over a ground of hissing rain and hissing, ambulating turtles got on my nerves. When all the gulls flew up at once, they sounded like a big tree in a strong wind of leaves. I'd shut my eyes and think about a tree, an oak, say, with real shade somewhere. I'd heard of cattle getting island-sick. I thought the goats were. One billy goat would stand on the volcano I'd christened Mount Despar, or Mount Despair. I'd time enough to play with names. And bleat and bleat and sniff the air. I'd grab his beard and look at him. His pupils, horizontal, narrowed up and expressed nothing, or a little malice. I got so tired of the very colors. One day I dyed a baby goat bright red with my red berries just to see something a little different, and then his mother wouldn't recognize him. Dreams were the worst. Of course I dreamed of food and love, but they were pleasant rather than otherwise. But then I dream of things like slitting a baby's throat, mistaking it for a baby goat. I have nightmares of other islands stretching away from mine. Infinities of islands, islands spawning islands, like frog's eggs turning into pollywogs of islands, knowing that I had to live on each and every one eventually for ages, registering their flora, their fauna, their geography." Just when I thought I couldn't stand it another minute longer, Friday came. The counts of death have everything all wrong. Friday was nice. Friday was nice, and we were friends. If only he had been a woman. I wanted to propagate my kind, and so did he, I think, poor boy. He'd pet the baby goats sometimes and race with them or carry one around. Pretty to watch. He had a pretty body. And then, one day, they came and took us off. Now I live here, another island that doesn't seem like one, but who decides? My blood was full of them. My brain bred islands. But that archipelago has petered out. I'm old. I'm bored too, drinking my real tea, surrounded by uninteresting lumber. The knife there on the shelf, it reeked of meaning like a crucifix. It lived. How many years did I beg it and implore it not to break? I knew each nick and scratch by heart, the bluish blade, the broken tip, the lines of wood grain on the handle. Now it won't look at me at all. The living soul is dribbled away." Now it won't look at me at all, the living soul is dribbled away. My eyes rest on it and pass on. The local museums asked me to leave everything to them, the flute, the knife, the shriveled shoes, my shedding goat-skin trousers, moths have got in the fur, the parasol that took me such a time remembering the way the ribs should go. It still will work, but folded up looks like a plucked and skinny fowl. How can anyone want such things?
As many of you know, in the spring of nineteen seventy-six Elizabeth Bishop was awarded the Norsted International Literary Laureateship by the publication Books Abroad. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Ivor Ivask, editor of Books Abroad, who will make some brief comments on how and why Miss Bishop received this honor.
Thank you very much. I am very pleased that what has turned into an Elizabeth Bishop year here, and is ending with this session honoring her, and here at the MLA, at the same time, the publication of her new book Geography III. But it all began back in Oklahoma in February, when Miss Bishop was awarded the Books Abroad Noostad International Prize for Literature. This is a biennial literary prize, given for a life work, or an important life work in progress, based on literary merit alone, without any political or geographic or other extraliterary considerations. It is awarded by an international jury of twelve writers and critics from all over the world, east and west. And it was first awarded back in nineteen seventy, and went to the Italian poet Giuseppe Ungaretti. To tell, show you how difficult the choices have been from time to time, or from one time to the other, I want to tell you that the final balloting in nineteen seventy was between Pablo Neruda and Giuseppe Ungaretti. And it certainly was not a simple choice, and does not prove that one is necessarily, quote, greater, end quote than the other. Because really, these are magnitudes that are equal, and it is really a toss-up often who is finally chosen. The next prize was in nineteen seventy-two, and it went to the Colombian novelist Gabriel Garcia Marquez. And here again, the final ballot was between Gabriel Garcia Marquez and Octavio Paz. And Octavio Paz has not forgiven me yet, this, although I was not really, I had only one voice in it. In nineteen seventy-four, the prize went to the French poet Francis Ponge, and in nineteen seventy-six to Elizabeth Bishop. To show you that the choice was not an easy one, but a really almost unpredictable one, I want to read some of the names of the jurors who were members of this nineteen seventy-six jury. John Ashbery, Auguste Bartra, a Catalan poet from Spain, Marie-Claire Blé from Canada, Dennis Brutus from South Africa, Mohamed Deeb from Algeria, Zbigniew Herbert from Poland, Thomas Kinsella from Ireland, and Günther Kuhnert from East Germany. The candidates which these jurors presented were, besides Miss Bishop, who was presented by two jurors, Marie-Claire Blé and John Ashbery, were Yannis Rizos of Greece, Anais Nin, Andrej Wozniacki, Woloschoinka of Nigeria, Czeslaw Milos, Poland, Robert Lowell, and Tadeusz Rozzewicz of Poland. The final ballot was between Robert Lowell and Elizabeth Bishop. And I understand that there is no break in their friendship, because the jury chose this time to award the prize to Miss Bishop. I am very pleased that this prize that went to her in February was the opening of a great fine year for her, which has brought her recognition that she, I think, very amply deserves. It is interesting that at first, I did not believe at all that she would be selected as the laureate of this year, because there are so many of the other candidates seem to be stronger, more committed politically, more colorful, more dramatic, and her quiet, very resilient voice would not carry very far, especially with an international jury such as this. But as the jury deliberated more and more, her quiet resistance began, her private voice convinced more and more jurors. And when the, some of the members in the jury were stressing the sufferings that the Greek poet Yannis Rizos had gone through, or the political uprightness of another poet, in the end, she became paradoxically more and more appealing to more and more jurors. And so, the final ballot was rather overwhelmingly for Elizabeth Bishop, and so she is the nineteen seventy-six laureate of the Books Abroad Noostad International Prize for Literature. And I'm very happy that this session tonight is the final conclusion to a year which, of recognitions which she, in my opinion, amply deserves.
This evening's program participants probably need little introduction. They're all distinguished persons whose names are well-known. Therefore, I will make their introductions brief. The first paper of the evening will be presented by Professor Marjorie Perloff, formerly of Catholic University and the University of Maryland, and now of the University of Southern California. Professor Perloff has published myriad scholarly articles and reviews. Her latest book is entitled Frank O'Hara: Poet Among Painters. I apologize publicly to Miss Perloff for the misprint in the title of her paper as it appears in the program. The proper title of her presentation is Elizabeth Bishop: The Course of a Particular, Not the Particular.
That's because it's a Stevens title, and so I wanted to be sure it was right. I'm losing my voice, so I'll do the best I can, it's been two days of too much talking. I'm going to start with a quotation from the short story In a Village, In the Village. "She stood in the large front bedroom with sloping walls on either side, papered in wide white and dim gold stripes. Later it was she who gave the scream." These two sentences appear on the first page of Elizabeth Bishop's extraordinary autobiographical story, In the Village, nineteen fifty-three. And they provide us with an entry into a poetic universe that is still all too often praised for its visual accuracy, its objective precision, its painterly detail, labels that tell us only half the story. The she referred to is the poet's mother, Gertrude Ballmer Bishop, who had a first nervous collapse in nineteen eleven at the age of thirty, when her husband Thomas suddenly died eight months after the birth of their only child, Elizabeth. Mrs. Bishop spent the rest of her life in and out of mental hospitals, first McLean's near Boston, then in a sanatorium in Canada. In the summer of nineteen sixteen, her devoted sisters brought her home to Nova Scotia, in the hope that the familiar surroundings of her mother's house might improve her condition. But after some difficult weeks, Mrs. Bishop had a total breakdown and had to be taken away. Although she did not die until nineteen thirty-four, Elizabeth never saw her again. For all practical purposes, the poet was thus orphaned at the age of five. In the Village is about the tragic summer when the mother came home for the last time. But as anyone who has read the story knows, it deals with this material very obliquely. It is not even a particularly sad story, for the mother's scream is consistently juxtaposed to the beautiful sound clang that emanates from the blacksmith's shop at the end of the garden. And the child seems curiously detached from her mother's situation, absorbed in the sights and sounds of her native village. Yet detachment is not quite the right word, for the real theme of In the Village is how to exercise pain that would otherwise be unbearable, how to discipline oneself so that it no longer hurts. The child learns that the only way to cope with the situation is to concentrate with all her might on the physical phenomena in her world, the objects in her field of vision, to be attentive to things, to nuances of color and texture and shape and sound, and to undergo simple daily rituals with fidelity and precision. This is the way to steel oneself against suffering. The scream with which In the Village opens is thus treated as a disembodied force. The scream hangs like that, unheard, in memory. Now it is settling down, the scream. We are waiting for a scream. But it is not screamed again, and the red sun sets in silence. No one is going to scream. And finally, when the front bedroom is once again empty, now there is no scream. Throughout the story, everyone fears its onset, waits for it to occur, and tries to prevent it from happening, but no one talks about it, and the child detaches the act of screaming from its agent, just as she detaches the objects in her environment from the nameless mother who is always referred to as she. Everyone else's name, the grandmother, the aunts, Nate the blacksmith, Miss Gurley the village dressmaker, Nellie the cow, Miss Ruth Hill who owns the local shoe shop. But the mother remains always a pronoun, and in the film-like shots that make up Bishop's vivid, hallucinatory tale, she is absorbed into her external environment or subordinated to her actions. Thus, in the passage cited above, the sloping bedroom walls, papered in wide white and dim gold stripes, are foregrounded, whereas the human being, whose presence is the disturbing element in the child's consciousness, is reduced in scale, it was she who gave the scream. As the child watches... Is the microphone on? Did it go? As the child watches the dressmaker fit the new purple dress on her mother's thin frame, she notes, quote, "The wallpaper glittered, and the elm trees outside hung heavy and green, and the straw matting smelled like the ghost of hay." And she listens for the beautiful sounds from the blacksmith's shop, reminding herself that Nate was there, Nate, wearing a long black leather apron over his trousers and bare chest, sweating hard, a black leather cap on top of dry, thick, black and gray curls, a black sooty face, iron filings, whiskers, and gold teeth, all together, and a smell of red-hot metal and horses' hoofs. This mental image is reassuring, muffling the terror of the first scream which occurs the following moment. The mother is not only nameless but faceless. She is present not as a person with a specific identity, but as a set of gestures, of isolated words, of objects in her possession. When her trunks from Boston are unpacked shortly before her arrival, the child is enchanted by the clothes, black or white, and black and white, a mourning hat and mourning coat, a white embroidered parasol, and white handkerchiefs with narrow black hems. These are, of course, reminders of a father's death, but the child mistakes mourning for homonym and finds mourning handkerchiefs lovely objects. Quote, "In bright sunlight over breakfast tables they flutter." Similarly, a bottle of perfume which has leaked and made awful brown stains is regarded as a magic vial. Oh, marvelous scent from somewhere else. It doesn't smell like that here, but there, somewhere, it does still. The longing to travel to see and know other worlds is born early. As her grandmother and aunts unpack the trunk, the child finds a big bundle of postcards. Quote, "The curled elastic around them breaks. I gather them together on the floor." What follows is particularly interesting in relation to Bishop's poetry. The narrator, who is, of course, not really a child, but the adult remembering and recreating her childhood feelings, begins with precise description. Some people wrote with pale blue ink, and some with brown, and some with black, but mostly blue. The stamps have been torn off many of them, but this painstaking precision quickly gives way to animistic projection. Some are plain or photographs, but some have lines of metallic crystal on them, how beautiful. Silver, gold, red, and green are all four mixed together, crumbling off, sticking in the lines on my palms. All the cards like this are spread on the floor to study. The crystals outline the buildings on the cards in a way buildings are never outlined but should be. Here, as in the poem Over Two Thousand Illustrations in a Complete Concordance, imaginative penetration creates its own world. What the cards say is finally less important than their visual configurations. What are the messages? I cannot tell, but they are falling on those specks of hands and the hats, on the toes of their shoes, in their paths, wherever it is they are. And by this time, the postcard images with their dazzling crystalline color have come to life. And I think we do have a case here of no ideas but in things, although one hates to use that phrase anymore. To escape a world of human misery, one performs one's daily tasks. One of Bishop's later poems Going to the Bakery depicts the special pleasures and peculiar discipline of this seemingly simple ritual. "The bakery lights are dim beneath our rationed electricity. The round cakes look about to faint. Each turns up a glazed white eye. The gooey tarts are red and sore. Buy, buy, what shall I buy?" "To be sent on an errand," rejoices the child of In the Village after her mother has made a sudden frightening scene. Then everything is all right. And she rushes off to the candy shop to buy her mother the desired humbugs, candies which are brown like brookwater but hard and shaped like little twisted pillows. They last a long time but lack the spit-producing brilliance of cherry or strawberry. Discrimination, careful discernment of sameness and difference, these become quasi-religious rituals that distance despair. Even when in one terrifying moment the hands of the mother are on my head pushing me down, the child calmly slides out from under them knowing that Nellie is waiting for me in the yard, holding her nose just under the watering trough. My stick waits against the doorframe clad in bark. And she escapes into the world of village streets and pastures which the scream cannot penetrate." Throughout the story, all painful reminders of Throughout the story, all painful reminders of the mother's illness, questions posed by well-meaning neighbors, remarks, looks are exercised in this way. When the grandmother and aunts comment sadly that she never finished embroidering a certain tablecloth, evidently because she suffered another attack, the child rivets her attention on the case of little ivory embroidery tools. I abscond with a little ivory stick with a sharp point. To keep it forever, I bury it under the bleeding heart by the crabapple tree, but it is never found again. She must make the little ivory stick her own. Or again, when Miss Gurley, the dressmaker, gives her a silver five-cent piece, she puts it in her mouth for greater safety on the way home and swallows it. Quote, "Months later, as far as I know, it is still in me, transmuting all its precious metal into my growing teeth and hair." Alchemy of this sort plays a central role in Bishop's story and in her poetry. The celluloid combs that hold the grandmother's hair in place can be used to play a tune on so that my grandmother's hair is full of music. She laughs. I am so pleased with myself that I do not feel obliged to mention the five-cent piece. Or again, when she sees the summer shoes in Hill's window, shoes in white and black patterned leather, and in the chalky sugary unearthly pinks and blues with straps that buttoned out to the house by a tinner and Bible salesman. Quote, "The Roman centurions wear them too, or something very like them." And that thought makes her exclaim, "Surely they are my size. Surely this summer, pink or blue, my grandmother will buy me a pair." Then she too will be a centurion emerging from a gilded book. The mother's final breakdown is again described only in terms of objects and external events. There's been a fire down the street, a scary incident. The reader never learns how she reacted. We only know that now the front bedroom is empty again. My older aunt has gone back to Boston, and my other aunt is making plans to go there after a while, too. To talk about her mother would be unbearable. Instead, the child notes, "There's been a new pig. He was very cute to begin with, and skidded across the kitchen linoleum while everyone laughed." And her newest errand is to take the weekly package her grandmother sends to the sanatorium down to the village post office. She hides the address, carefully written in purple indelible pencil, under her arm, praying that no one will see it, yet she loves to contemplate the contents of the parcel. Fruit, cake, Jordan almonds, a handkerchief with a tatted edge, fruit, cake, wild strawberry jam, a New Testament, a little bottle of scent from Hill's store with a purple silk tassel fastened to the stopper, fruit, cake, selections from Tennyson, a calendar with a quotation from Longfellow for every day, fruit, cake, Mois chocolates. On the way to the post office, she stops on the bridge and watches the little trout in the stream below. From above, the trout look as transparent as the water, but if one did catch one, it would be opaque enough with a little slick moon-white belly with a pair of tiny pleated rose-pink fins on it. Again, the object is contemplated with such attention that alchemy takes place. The colorless, seemingly transparent scales of the fish turn into something moon-white and rose-pink. And now there is no scream. There's only the beautiful clang, which sounds like a bellboy out at sea. It is the elements speaking, earth, air, fire, water. "In the Village" ends on a note of joy. Oh, beautiful sounds, strike again. In a seminal study of Pasternak's early prose, Roman Jakobsen argues that unlike Mayakovsky, whose poetic mode is insistently metaphoric, Pasternak follows the path of contiguous relations, metonymically digressing from the plot to the atmosphere and from the characters to the setting in space and time. In such stories as "The Childhood of Louvers and Aerial Ways," Jakobsen explains, "There is a tendency to substitute the action for the actor and the setting for the action, to resolve the image of the hero into a series of objectified states of mind of surrounding objects, animate or inanimate. Action disappears behind topography." And Jakobsen cites Pasternak's own comment made in an early poem. "Each thing, even the most minute, lived and took on importance without regard for my person." Or, as Elizabeth Bishop puts it in her poem "Sandpiper," "No detail, too small." Like Pasternak, whose short stories are stylistically, if not thematically, quite similar to "In the Village," Bishop digresses from actor to setting, from plot to atmosphere. Thus, the image of the mother is resolved into a series of surrounding objects, her black and white dresses, her broken teacups, her silver calling card case on a little chain. The scream is detached from the person who utters it, becoming a slight stain in those pure blue skies. Her presence is blotted out by the glinting wallpaper, the sounds of the blacksmith's forge, the cow flops of Nellie, the pale yellow window shade of Miss Spencer's house. Similarly, the village dressmaker disappears behind scraps of cloth, tissue-paper patterns, and a bosom full of needles with threads ready to pull out and make nests with. The grandmother is viewed as a head of silver hair, full of celluloid combs. The minister, Dr. Gillespie, is no more than a stiff straw sailor hat as black as stove polish. Action disappears behind topography, but the topography has a sense of presence that overshadows all else. What makes it possible for the child to survive her mother's second departure is the intuitive knowledge that life in the village continues. The four elements brought together in the blacksmith's clang regroup themselves in new formations and configurations, endlessly fascinating and challenging. The main source of regret is that one doesn't have time to take it all in. As the child looks in the milliner's shop, she sees four summer hats. Out of the corner of my eye, I can see that there is a yellow-chipped straw with little wads of flamingo-colored feathers around the crown, but again, there is no time to examine anything. This is not an idle statement. Like Rilke in the first Duino elegy, Elizabeth Bishop knows that it is the poet's task to respond to the challenge of external objects. She knows that she is needed by things. When we turn to the poems, we find everywhere the sense of participation in the life of things that characterizes in "The Village." To accuse Bishop, as have some critics, of being too impersonal, too detached, too unwilling to go beyond surfaces to expose her inner feelings, and that is a very common criticism that one reads, is thus to misunderstand the mainsprings of her art. I would argue that, on the contrary, Bishop is somewhat less successful in such famous poems as "The Fish," "The Weed," "Roosters," and "The Armadillo," poems which draw analogies between the natural world and the human one, pressing toward a moral or at least a central thematic statement, than she is in her more modest geographical or one might say ecological lyrics that treat the particular as numinous rather than as representative. And the first poem we could talk about is "The Map," but since we're short of time, I'm going to skip over that and talk about "The Monument," which is, I think, the best poem in Elizabeth Bishop's first volume, "North and South." And that poem, written in 1946, was inspired by the "fotage technique" of Max Ernst, Histoire Naturelle. And that poem in the collected poems, and I know many of you have that with you today, is on page twenty-six. As in "fotage," where chalk or some other medium is rubbed across a rough or textured surface, producing strange, unexpected forms, Elizabeth Bishop's monument remains a mystery. In discussing her poetic, the poet has spoken of the unexpected moments of empathy that catch a peripheral vision of whatever it is one can never really see full face but seems enormously important. Such a moment occurs as the poet traveler surveys a ramshackle wooden structure found in a lonely landscape. Now can you see the monument? It is of wood, built somewhat like a box. No? Built like several boxes in descending sizes, one above the other. Each is turned halfway around so that its corners point toward the sides of the one below, and the angles alternate. Then, on the topmost cube, is set a sort of flirty lace of webbed wood, long petals of board pierced with odd holes, foursided, stiff, ecclesiastical. From its four thin, warped poles spring out, slanted like fishing poles or flagpoles, and from them jigsaw works hang down, four lines of vaguely whittled ornament over the edges of the boxes to the ground. One might note to begin with that, as so often in Bishop's poetic world, one cannot see this object full face, this odd structure, full face. Each view is a partial one, for each box is on a different axis, and the angles alternate so that one cannot take it all in. Moreover, the sort of flirty lace of webbed wood that crowns the monument seems curiously out of place. Its four warped poles with their jigsaw work hanging down like vaguely whittled ornament have no meaningful connection to the geometric cubes stacked up beneath them. What does it all signify? I don't think we're meant to take the monument as a symbol of historical achievement or of art, as certain critics have suggested, for it is too amorphous, too shapeless, to bear such symbolic weight. Rather, one's interest is aroused by the relationship the poet perceives between building, sea, and sky. As she contemplates the structure, she notes, "A sea of narrow horizontal boards lies out behind our lonely monument, its long grains alternating right and left like floorboards. So the sea turns to wood, as does the sky, whose pellings are coarser than the seas, whose sunlight is splinter-y and clouds long-fibered. The driftwood sea and sky, grained with cloud, now come together, and the poet exclaims, 'It's like a stage set. It is all so flat. Those clouds are full of glistening splinters.'" And she must ask again, "What is that?" And reply, "It is the monument." The question-and-answer structure of the poem, "Now can you see the monument? It is of wood. Where are we? An ancient promontory. What can it prove? I am tired of breathing this eroded air," points to the futility of definitive descriptions. As in the meditative lyrics of John Ashbery, who regards Elizabeth Bishop as his favorite living poet, the emphasis is not on what is discovered, but on the process of discovery itself, what Elizabeth Bishop calls a self-forgetful, perfectly useless concentration. What matters is not the wooden monument, which reminds one of those bizarre structures one comes across in the Yucatan when one emerges from the brush into a clearing near the sea, but the poet's ability to create in a series of metonymic transfers a poetic structure in which wooden buildings, sea, and sky interpenetrate and come alive. Indeed, the last three lines provide more closure than we need, at least, I think so. "It is the beginning of a painting, a piece of sculpture, or poem, or monument, and all of wood. Watch it closely." But we have already watched closely, and the admonition is perhaps somewhat gratuitous. Many of Bishop's loveliest poems deal with edges, with the narrow line one treads between land and sea. Both are unknown, shadowy, frightening, whereas the edge itself, seen close-up, is comforting and familiar. What seems to me Elizabeth Bishop's most perfect poem is Cape Breton in the 1955 volume of Cold Spring. Here, there are no moral reflections, as in the final stanza of "The Armadillo," or in the last three lines of "The Monument," but every particular is radiant and becomes part of an intricate pattern. The poet, having returned to Nova Scotia, visits the bird islands, Cibou and Hartford. Again, she's standing on an edge, the cliff's brown, grass-frayed edge, between the dark interior of the country and the sea. Both are shrouded in mist. This is in the collected poems on page seventy-five. Birds, the razor-billed arc, and the silly-looking puffins all stand with their backs to the mainland, as does the poet herself. Sounds from the outside world, airplanes, motorboats, penetrate only dimly, but because they cannot be seen, their sounds are all the more frightening, and sometimes the she pastured on these cliffs fall over into the sea or onto the rocks. The waters of Cape Breton are therefore danger zones, but the mainland is no better. Quote, "The same mist hangs in thin layers among the valleys and gorges of the mainland, like rotting snow ice sucked away almost a spirit. The ghosts of glaciers drift among those folds and folds of fire. Spurs and hackmatac, dull, dead, deep peacock colors, each rise are distinguished from the next by an irregular, nervous sawtooth edge, alike but certain as a stereoscopic view. Between the soaked water, weaving and weaving, disappearing under the mist equally in all directions, and the mist-covered forest with its ghosts of glaciers, the poet stands in an empty world. It is Sunday, and so the occasional small yellow bulldozers stand quietly along the road. The little white churches have been dropped into the matted hills like lost quartz arrowheads. The schoolhouse is closed, its flag not flying, and even the roadside stand is not serving meals." Entranced by the solitude, the poet begins to imagine the places that she cannot see. She conjures up the interior, where deep lakes are reputed to be, and disused trails and mountains of rock, and miles of burnt forests standing in grave scratches. The only connecting link between herself and these regions, that now have little to say for themselves, is found in the thousands of lightsongs, sparrow songs, floating upward, freely, dispassionately through the mist, and meshing in brown-wet, fine, torn fishnets. Now the silence is suddenly broken by the arrival of a small bus, packed with people even to its step. The little bus stops, and a man carrying a baby gets off, climbs over a stile, and goes down through a small, steep meadow, which establishes its poverty in a snowfall of daisies, to the invisible house beside the water. Cape Breton is Elizabeth Bishop's Tintin Abbey or a solitary reaper. What happens objectively is absolutely unimportant, but the poet's imagination now creates a world. Just as the poet of Tintin Abbey sees the hermit's cave whereby his fire, the hermit sits alone, only in his mind's eye, so the narrator of Cape Breton cannot possibly see the man entering his house beside the water, she can only imagine the event. Bishop's favorite objective precision gives way to imaginative reconstruction. Reality is subordinated to pictorial composition. For the progress of the man with the baby from the bus stop through the misty daisy field down to the sea connects land and ocean in a new harmony. Cape Breton thus becomes a dreamlike "fotage" which juxtaposes silence and noise, land and sea, nature and technology. In one sense, this is one world, for the same mist covers all. In another, it is a world of single, separate things placed in stark opposition, small yellow bulldozers versus folds of fur, the snowfall of daisies versus the white china doorknob topping the flagpole, and so on. As a system of tensions only partially resolved, the landscape of Cape Breton becomes a microcosm of the larger world beyond, the parts so intensively seen metonymically contains the whole. We can now understand why this poet must be a traveler, for it is when one approaches the coast, as in arrival at Santos, that's on page one oh three in the collected poems, that the gap between imagination and reality closes, that the once-distant romantic shoreline turns out to be a noisy, bustling harbor sporting its strange and brilliant rag of a flag, its twenty-six freighters waiting to be loaded with green coffee beans, and introducing its banal customs officials and money exchangers. At the end of "Questions of Travel," Elizabeth Bishop ironically playing variations on Baudelaire's "Le Voyage" asks, "Is it lack of imagination that makes us come to imagine places, not just stay at home? Or could Pascal have been not entirely right about just sitting quietly in one's room?" Continent, city, country, society, the choice is never wide and never free. And here or there, no, should we have stayed at home, wherever that may be? The questions are, of course, rhetorical, for Bishop, home is the place where one can linger long enough to see each object in its totality, where the poet's consciousness can absorb each item it confronts until the world of related things begins to cohere. Thus, the seemingly slight poem "Filling Station" transforms an ordinary, oil-soaked, oil-permeated, quite thoroughly dirty gas station into a configuration as intriguing as the poet's earlier monument. As she oddly watches the owner and his greasy sons perform their duties, the attentive poet traveler notices that the station is also the family's home. Behind the pumps, there is a cement porch containing a set of crushed and grease-impregnated wickerwork. The only note of color is provided by some comic books that lie upon a big dim doily, draping a tabouret, part of the set beside a big kiersuit begonia, that's on page one forty-nine. Most poets would find such a scene drearily depressing, and think of it poets like Lowell have done with things like gas stations. But Elizabeth Bishop extracts the figure in the culprit. Notice that in the final stanza, motor oil reappears in a comically altered context, implying that even in this grubby landscape, everything connects. Somebody embroiders the doily, somebody waters the plant, or oils it maybe. Somebody arranges a row of cans so that they softly say, "Esso, so, 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 so. Somebody loves us all." Here, as in the postcards found by the child of "In the Village," the crystals outline the buildings on the cards in a way buildings are never outlined but should be. If Bishop's is a sparsely peopled landscape, it is nevertheless expressive of a very personal vision. To dwell so lovingly on external phenomena rather than on obviously private experience is in itself a commitment. The frail scream flows up into the dark blue sky, too mortal for us to hear for long, but the river continues to give an unexpected gurgle, and the beautiful sound of the blacksmith's forge, containing as it does, the Four Elements, strikes again. Thank you.
The next paper is by Mr. Jerome Mazzaro, professor of comparative literature at the State University of New York in Buffalo. Mr. Mazzaro has been a recipient of a Guggenheim Foundation Fellowship in Poetry. His books include "Changing the Windows," a volume of his own poetry, and "The Poetic Themes of Robert Lowell," as well as several other critical works and anthologies. Professor Mazzaro?
Let me know if you can hear me. Long before Thomas de Quincy explained how Daniel Defoe so plausibly circumstantiated his false historical records as to make them pass for genuine, readers were aware of the liberties that Robinson Crusoe took with fact. Yet by Defoe's inventing, when there seems no imaginable temptation to invent, and by the apparent inertness of effect of his little circumstantiations, he was able to give the work a double character, amusement that readers might take it for novel, and verisimilitude that they might read it as history. Five years before de Quincy's essay, Edgar Allan Poe remarked that men do not look upon the work in the light of a literary performance. Defoe has none of their thoughts, Robinson all. The powers which have wrought the wonder have been thrown into obscurity by the very stupendousness of the wonder they have wrought. Readers of Elizabeth Bishop's Crusoe in England are struck as well by the liberties which her poem takes with fact. Supposedly, the man whom Defoe says was rescued from his island in sixteen eighty-seven, her Crusoe quotes while still living on the island lines from a poem that William Wordsworth writes in eighteen oh four. The anachronism is a deliberate clue to the complex nature of the narrative, and just as readers of Defoe have come to understand that his liberties have often to do with allegory, Bishop's readers may eventually see her work as an equally complex allegory. Her meaning lies, as did his, within both the various contexts that the work calls up and the narrative that the contexts are called up to serve. Now there's a gap of about twelve or so pages, and I'll continue. Within the body of Bishop's poetry, Crusoe in England reverts particularly to poems like Chumandefaire and The Gentleman of Charlotte, and their interest in loneliness and the purpose of love. Master and servant giving each other meaning form the basis of Cucci. The bar, the island world echoes not only the bleat of the islands in Cape Breton, but also the hillside about Rio in The Burglar of Babylon. Like Crusoe, the burglar finds that once having left home, he cannot return, even though he returns to the same place. Beaches hiss in San Piper, a naturalistic detail abounds in Florida. But most importantly, the poem seems to reflect backward on the prodigal and over two thousand illustrations and a complete concordance. The prodigal deals too with isolation, as a modern-day wastrel decides to leave the pigsty of a world he lives in. Like Crusoe, the prodigal at times takes solace in drink and thinks he almost might endure his exile yet another year or more. Not nightmares, but shuttering insights beyond his control touch him, relieving his nausea. But unlike Crusoe, who seems at the poem's end to accept necessity, the prodigal chooses to go home. Though the reader is not sure if this means suicide or relocation, over two thousand illustrations and a complete concordance, with its goats, dead volcanoes, social teas, and everything only connected by and and and, parallels the theme of the Crusoe poem of an experience that puts one beyond being satisfied with former worlds. Here, the incarnation, rather than an endemic world without Eve, is made central to the changed perspective. Bishop's traveler makes clear that it was really this old nativity which she was seeking laterally, rather than the mutual self-confirming inter-subjectivity that Crusoe and Friday, or Adam and Eve, convey. The poem's themes of evolution, moral responsibility, and loss are reinforced additionally by other recent Bishop poems. Night City uses the image of an Indian faker to describe flying over population centers at night. The urban light clusters resemble burning coals, as the city itself is described as uninhabitable and the sky dead. But in an evolutionary way, there are creatures, careful ones, overhead. These creatures who set down their feet and walk green-red, green-red, are, as Alfred Russell Wallace argued, man extended by technology into something greater. The comparison of the inexplicable religious mystery of walking on live coal to the mystery of flying is in part the delineating of a recurrent dichotomy of religion and science that Bishop sees existing. Five flights up with its unknown bird on its usual branch, and little black dog who has no sense of shame compares the world of nature to that of man for whom yesterday is almost impossible to lift. Memory and Christian responsibility are again the difference, as shame is a determining focus. In the Waiting Room describes the development of Christian responsibility in a girl of seven as she sits pondering a National Geographic magazine while her aunt is in with a dentist. I should add, for those of you who are at the morning session, the contents of that issue are the complete manufacture of Miss Bishop. Only the article on volcanoes appears in that particular issue. Mysteriously, in the course of the wait, the girl discovers that she is part of humanity and the world war going on about her. The villainal one art describes the recurrence of losses that at first are no disaster and which finally may look like disaster. The poem shares with Crusoe in England a sense of thwarted immediate goals that if surmounted, may lead to greater realizations. But perhaps most clearly Crusoe in England parallels and opposes the end-of-march Duxbury. In this later poem, a proto or crypto dream house replaces the island as a locus for withdrawal, and with its two bare rooms and boring books, the situation of imprisonment is even more pronounced. The withdrawal occurs in this instance just as the Canadian geese are returning north to propagate their kind, and when the lion, lamb, or mutton-fat aspects of March are ascendant. Nature's hostility emerges in a broken kite, the sense of the dream house as protective, and the image of the sun as a kittenish lion who bats the kite out of the sky to play with. Instead of the creative explosions of Crusoe in England, the narrator would oppose this hostility. The wind, however, is much too cold, and the house is boarded up, and he chooses the alternative of a completed, uneventful walk. An image of Walter Pater is conveyed in the poem's lovely diaphanous blue flame, wavering doubles in the window, though the speaker would be American enough to gulp grog, all Americana. The difference between the speaker of the poem and Crusoe is one of necessity. Crusoe is forced to invent and create by circumstance; the speaker of the end-of-march Duxbury is forced only to imagine. The poems that result are styled accordingly. Crusoe's narrative is as baffling to him as the desire by the local museum keeper to enshrine his belongings. Crusoe speaks like a man who is uncertain of what makes him interesting. In contrast, the eye of the end-of-march Duxbury focuses on the lesson of the broken kite, and sentimentality ensues. Like the stone it describes, the poem may tease the sun awhile, but it too will end battered down. Self-pity is not transcended, as it is in parts of Crusoe in England. Yet it is the allegorical nature of Crusoe in England which shows Bishop most brilliantly as a poet, especially for modern readers. Her concentration simultaneously on precise language and on the workings of a spiritual force implicit in the recurrence of certain words and situations makes her an heir of both Dante and the New England minds that Iver Winters describes in Maul's Curse. Much as the Puritans came to look upon themselves as instruments in the divine hand for the carrying out of a great religious mission, the object of which was the rebuilding of God's church, her narrators look upon objective evidence and inner assurance and individual behavior as symbolic. Their aim, however, is not the sectarian goal of Calvinism or Catholicism, rather humanity as a whole becomes God's church, and biological survival an instrument of its perpetuation. As manifested in her poetry, divinity assumes a status comparable to necessity or history. Through a kind of clustering about recurrent words similar to that which David Lyle recommended to William Carlos Williams in the early forties, and Williams used in the construction of Patterson, the shape of this divinity is discoverable empirically, I'm sorry, the shape of this divinity is discoverable empirically. Thus, the combination of choice, necessity, and Greek drama within the poem sends a reader immediately to W.H. Auden's uses of the term at the same time, in the context of Robinson Crusoe, and the terms evoked, I'm sorry, and at the same time in the context of Robinson Crusoe, the terms evoke the specific Greek drama Philoctetes, and the particular adaptation of it made by Andre Gide. Similarly, basil, cloudiness, volcanic islands, guano, propagation of kind and registering fauna, flora, and geography set up immediate connections with natural history and historians, and bring this realm of discourse into play. Although secular, both sets of reference are as exactly circumscribed as the Bible and biblical commentary, and Bishop accords them as careful treatment. This care or respect for the formality of what by simple common usage comes to represent the objective or general creates the empirical equivalent to the ideal world that theorists posit for allegory. In allegory, the theory of a symbolic mode, Angus Fletcher proposes that the heart of allegory is a human reconstitution of divinely-inspired messages, a revealed transcendental language which tries to preserve the remoteness of a properly veiled godhead. Thus allegory is often employed when there is a conflict between rival authorities and appears when a people is being lulled into an action by the routine of daily life, so as to forget all higher aspirations. The rival authorities seem, in Bishop's case, to be everyday experience in the linear perspectives of Christianity and evolution. Sensuous apprehension is contrasted to salvation by grace or evolution through a new species of man. A kind of stoicism rises from the opposition. The Christian bias which occurs often as a memory of religious purpose rather than as a vital religious experience can be accounted for in several ways. Bishop's upbringing is Christian, and the bias correctly interprets her attitudes as the outgrowth of this upbringing. Yet one can as easily propose that for her to break completely with Christian myth is for her to cut Western culture off from its past, and thus to sever the linear development which underscores her vision. Finally, one may argue that Christianity is a deep myth, and that all deep myths have about them some truth. In any case, much as the personae of Dante's Commedia, her narrators, by a coalescing of inner and outer truths, achieve a type that comes increasingly to flesh out a vision of the world. The evolution of Crusoe offers an excellent illustration of how this coalescing occurs. Bishop presents him as a type for the creative individual by rejecting the autobiographical eye and adding new details to the myth. He is neither a mask for her view, nor a platonic type to which experience conforms. In some ways, he is an extension of the mythic method described by T.S. Eliot in Ulysses' Order and Myth. By his sheer survival, he comes to symbolize her evolutionary belief. Yet here, even here, his geography gives way to concern for the struggle for survival. By investigating the imagination, he seemingly further survival, at the same time that his failure to propagate works against his success. At all times, as in the Armadillo, a concept of mass ecology appears to be critical. Man's aspirations cannot come at wanton damage to the world about. He reflects consequently what Angus Fletcher cites as characteristic of the allegorical protagonist. He acts as if possessed, implying cosmic notions of fate and personal fortune, as actions touch on both human and divine spheres and make an appeal to an almost scientific curiosity about the order of things. He is a conquistator, arbitrating order over chaos by confronting a random collection of people and events and imposing his own fate upon that random collection. As in Dante, the literal sense comes first, it being the meaning in which the others are contained and without which it would be impossible and irrational to come to an understanding of the others, particularly the allegorical. This literal sense permits the factive sense to border at times on rationalism and at times on surrealism. If it were not for the allegorical bent, in other of her poems, one might think that Bishop was drawn to allegory in Crusoe in England by the nature of the material that she was assembling. In his preface to Serious Reflections of Robinson Crusoe, Defoe affirms that the story, though allegorical, is also historical, and critics like Leslie Stephen have seen the novel as a kind of allegory for its author's fate, he had suffered from solitude of soul. Edwin Benjamin and others have seen the book less personally as a symbolic account of a religious experience. Similarly, critics of Sophocles have proposed that his play is an allegory for the situation of Athens in four oh nine B.C., and that Philoctetes is intended to be identified with Alcibiades. While recognizing the faults of Alcibiades, Athens needed him to manage her war with Sparta. Gide's adaptation, as your men brave states, is an attempt, more or less consciously, to deal indirectly with the question of homosexuality, a central problem of Gide's own. Allegorical interpretations have been applied to the poem's predecessors, Alice in Wonderland and Gulliver's Travels, almost from the moments of their publications. And Antoine de Cennec Superré begins his account of Little Prince with a drawing of a bald constrictor that has just swallowed an elephant, and he goes on to assert that what is most important is invisible. The insistence on natural history, that plants, animals, and environments be studied in order to uncover information about the nature of man, makes its disciplines in their way allegorical. The reality of their data is no less ciphers than an ideal encyclopedia; then in the Middle Ages, fact had been seen as ciphers in a divine work. The parodic posture carries with it aspects of the original transcendental notion. One may see Bishop's allegory over as a necessary solution to what she describes in her Shenandoah interview as a love of religious poetry and a dislike of didacticism. She told Ashley Brown that Auden's later poetry is "sometimes spoiled for me by his didacticism. I don't like modern religiosity in general; it always seems to lead to a tone of moral superiority. Times have changed since Herbert's day." By means of the corresponding ideal world that one removes from experience, she can assert a moral meaning, at the same time she keeps her narrative free from overt moralizing. Certainly, the ideal world that Crusoe in England and other of her recent poems call into being goes a long way toward bringing together the body of her work in a more unified, recognizable, and coherent way. When the complete poems appeared in nineteen sixty-nine, one was thankful mainly for the convenience of having all her poems under one cover. Bishop's tendency to keep her subjects isolated, small, and circumscribed worked there toward establishing her as the master of the self-contained anthology piece. Now, one has something closer to the one significant, consistent, and developing personality that Eliot makes requisite to great poets. Nonetheless, readers must not forget that the allegory and its coalescs are brought about by Bishop's continuing respect for particulars. Like Wordsworth, her best poetry does not start with an abstraction or a generalization, a divine commonplace which she wishes to illustrate. Nothing- Nothing in Crusoe in England or the recent poems shows a retraction of the discreetnesses she articulates in Sandpiper. On the literal level, her world is still minute and vast and clear. Her millions of grains remain black, white, tan, and gray, mixed with quartz grains, rose, and amethyst.
The third presentation is by William Meredith, professor of English at Connecticut College. Mr. Meredith, six volumes of poetry have won him national recognition. His first book, Love Letter from an Impossible Land, appeared in the Yale series of younger poets in nineteen forty-four. His most recent volume is entitled Hazard, the Painter. Professor Meredith has served three times as a juror for the National Book Awards and is at present a member of the Literature Panel of the National Endowment for the Arts. Mr. Meredith?
In one art, a poem in the new book, Miss Bishop tells us she lost her mother's watch. I'll bet Sybil Estes never lost a watch. Early in our pen-pal relationship, her sense of time declared itself. On April fifth, she wrote me, "The format for the M.L.A. sessions is usually several papers, about twenty to thirty minutes long, or as much in an hour and a half at a session. By May fourth, participants were cut back a little, quite properly, because Miss Bishop's reading would be of major interest to everyone present. I request that you keep your papers to between fifteen and twenty minutes in length." By the thirty-first of August, she was laying it on the line. "Please indicate to me how much of your longer paper you intend to read at M.L.A. I urge you," this sentence underlined and followed by three exclamation marks, "to make this presentation not over fifteen minutes. As you can tell, programs will be long," she continues, "especially the evening ones. We don't want to bore our audience. Since one manuscript page read aloud usually takes about two minutes, I urge you to streamline your papers to seven or eight pages." Well, I got the message. A cost of poet all my life, I knew if I wrote a poem about all the things I would say and pose about this beautiful achievement of Miss Bishop's, it would be short. It's three pages, double-spaced. By common practice, you will have to concede that it is a poem because I say so. That is one of the accepted definitions in our time. This is how the thing goes. Invitation to Miss Elizabeth Bishop with an epigraph, an invocation, and fifteen maxims, and to be followed by an affecting reading of one of her complete poems. The epigraph: "I chose her because she's my favorite living poet." John Ashbery nominating Miss Bishop for the Books Abroad Nystat International Prize for Literature. The invocation: "From four thirty-seven Lewis Wolfe, by Amtrak's uncertain rails, trailing your zip code one-four-six-two-two, come dawdling down from Boston this late December day, crossing the Harlem River on thin sticks, to where session five-six-five lovingly travails, claiming your vast geographies for M.L.A. Come dawdling anyway." The maxims: "We speak of certain artists as great, others as important, still others grudgingly as original. When we say, 'I choose her because she's my favorite living poet,' we praise a one-to-one relationship with a writer who alters our lives a little for the better." The scholars of literature and the makers of it are said to exist in symbiotic relationship, but at best, the relationship is more comradely than that. We have both bet our sweet lives on the efficacy of literature to alter human lives a little for the better. That energy which tells us that poetry makes nothing happen ends, you will recall, by asking the dead poet to alter our lives vastly for the better. When Elizabeth Bishop published her complete poem seven years ago, we realized that we had grown sadly accustomed to incomplete ones. The oeuvre is small, like Piradella Francesca's and Sappho's, but here, elimination has been achieved by a more deliberate process than time and accidental loss. One wonders whether, if poet X had published only Miss Bishop's now total of ninety-five poems instead of his seventeen books, two selecteds, and one small and one mammoth collected poems, some silky confection of sow's ears might have occurred. One thinks that unlikely. The stuff is different. A sign of major vision, the artist is as careful to bring the small insight to perfection as the large. Late air is no less a Bishop poem, no more a Bishop poem than Visits to Saint Elizabeth's. Foolish critics judge a problem by its awkwardness, in Auden's phrase, measure a poem by its pretension, as if David had never picked up a sling, or Emily Dickinson a robin. Foolish critics reproach Frost and Auden for little poems, small themes, which they took to be trivia, signs of decline in powers very early on, as it now appears. Miss Bishop was too quick for them. From the first, she has cut small jewels along with the large. The appropriateness of form in these poems constitutes a lucid, enduring maxim, which only a very unwise person would try to paraphrase. I would paraphrase it as "total attention." We are accustomed to certain technical sloppiness in revolutionaries. We used to speak tolerantly of the nursemaid who threw out the baby with the bathwater, although nobody really approved of that. What is to be said of the nurseries today, with the window wide open, dirty bathwater steaming in the basin, and no baby to be found? If you want to see perfection of organic form, look at Visits to Saint Elizabeth, a round, sandpiper, quatraines, the Sestina September rain falls on the house, red art of Illinell, and roosters in triplets. She will yet civilize and beguile us from our silly schools. The Olsen's will lie down with the Wilbur's, and the Dion Wacowskis will do quadrilles with the J.V. Cunningham's, and the Toothmother will suckle the rhymed skunk kittens that The two kinds of poetry are excellent and other, as with scholarship. These cannot lie down together because one will always crush the other in his sleep. Elizabeth Bishop, as far as we know, writes only the one kind. Most other poets let us know, in print, of their greater versatility. I was to finish with a reading of Elizabeth Bishop's poem, but to make the point of privacy, I will only read the last maxim and not its message. This is one of Elizabeth Bishop's excellent complete poems, offered in homage by a laurel subject. There are eighty-eight others and six superior translations now in print. Thank you.
The final presentation is by Professor Ashley Brown. Ashley Brown has served as a professor of English at the University of South Carolina for seventeen years. He was Fulbright lecturer in American literature at the University of Rio de Janeiro in nineteen sixty-four, sixty-five, and again in nineteen seventy-one, seventy-two. It was during these years that he became acquainted with Elizabeth Bishop. He has edited numerous books and published many essays in literary journals in England and the United States. Perhaps most significant of all, at least for me, he, as well as and along with Elizabeth Bishop, has translated both Brazilian verse and prose. He has thereby made some of the best literature of that culture available to the English-speaking world. He will speak about Elizabeth Bishop's translations. Professor Brown?
Elizabeth Bishop's practice and translation is actually larger than this paper can deal with. I must leave aside, for instance, there, her versions of poems by Max Jacob that she published years ago, though these could easily be related to the French surrealist phase of her own work. And recently, she's been translating poems by her friend Octavio Paz. In a sense, these take her back to Mexico in a period in the nineteen forties when she lived there and knew Pablo Neruda. So in order to get on with the subject, I shall restrict myself to Brazil, the country where she's lived for almost twenty years. After she arrived there in nineteen fifty-one and decided to stay, and she settled down in the life of the country and learned Portuguese very easily. In any case, nearly all of her friends were Brazilians. Presently, she was introduced to an elderly lady, Alyssa Brant, who had grown up in Giamantina, a somewhat remote mining town in the state of Minas Gerais, General Mines. Senhora Brant was half-English by descent. Her grandfather had gone out as a doctor with a mining company, but she was brought up as a Brazilian. As a young girl in the eighteen nineties, she wrote a diary that she later called Minha vida de menina, My Life as a Little Girl. It was not till nineteen forty-two, however, when she was living in Rio, that she had any idea of publishing it. Her husband, who was then the president of the Bank of Brazil, made the suggestion. She used the pseudonym Elina Morley, which has been a name in her family. Although the diary was only intended to amuse her family and friends, it was recommended to the public by George Bernanos, who was then in wartime exile in Brazil, and very soon it had something of the status of a small classic. One can often run across it in stationery shops, for example. Miss Bishop proposed to translate the diary, and she immersed herself in the subject. It was a good excuse for another journey, this time to Giamantina, which was not easy to reach twenty-five years ago. Nowadays, the town with its fine old houses is rather famous among connoisseurs of architecture, and one can drive there on an excellent road. The diary is, among other things, an authentic record of provincial life at a moment when Brazil was moving into another epoch of its history. Slavery had been abolished in eighteen eighty-eight, and the empire succeeded by the First Republic in the following year. But the main interest of the book lies in its loving but very candid account of a family, a theme to which Miss Bishop would return in her poems and translations. Her introduction to the translation is one of the best pieces of prose that she's done, and as Marian Moore said in a review in Poetry in nineteen fifty-nine, I quote, "The attitude to life revealed by the diary, Elina's aperceptiveness and innate accuracy," this is very Marian Moore, "does seem a double portrait, the exactness of observation in the introduction being an extension in manner of Miss Bishop's verse and other writings." The diary, in fact, occupies an important place in Miss Bishop's canon. The American edition has long run out of prints and should certainly be reissued. After nineteen sixty, Miss Bishop turned increasingly to the art of translation, and she will have to be included in any future edition of George Steiner's Anthology, the excellent Penguin Book of Modern Verse Translation. In nineteen sixty-three, she brought out three of the eighteen sections of Joan Cabral the Melanetos, March Vida Severina, which had been composed in nineteen fifty-four, fifty-five. The Death and Life of a Severino, as she calls it, is a panambuco Christmas play by a most sophisticated poet diplomat from the Northeast, and it is intended for a performance, which has been very successfully done. The story is simple but moving and partakes of the folklore of the Northeast, too. The Severino, of the title, is a typical, almost anonymous poor man whose pilgrimage takes him through the dry backlands. There is a bird, there is a sense of miraculous presence abroad. The subject must have been very sympathetic to Miss Bishop. She is unusually sensitive to the special qualities of the birds, and she manages a lion, which is quite remarkably similar to the original. Somos muitos severinos, iguais em tudo e na menina. We are many severinos, and our destiny is the same, to soften up these stones by sweating over them, to try to bring to life a dead and deady land, to try to wrestle arm out of burnt-over land. Elizabeth Bishop's translations from Brazilian poetry are not extensive, actually, but they have set the standard for the rest of us who've tried this. Pre-Bishop translations are mostly lumps of words that have no rhythmic life in English, and part of her superiority comes from her birth and control of the meter. As an admirer of Marian Moore, she always uses the most natural order of words in an English sentence, and she knows how to suppress words in some places and how to add them in another. Here's the first line of the Sonnet of Intimacy by Venicius de Marais, followed by her rendition: Nostalgias da pendula, há muito azul de mais. Farm afternoons, there's much too much blue air. The opening phrase is reduced from seven syllables to four and two contractions, that is, prepositions plus articles are dropped, but it seems just as long in English where the sense of languor is increased by the comma, a clear gain. And then the translator adds "air," which isn't present in the Portuguese, but it echoes "theirs" and carries out the idea nicely. A splendid iambic pentameter line is made out of Venicius Alexandrin. Venicius de Marais is an immensely popular poet in Brazil. He's long made a success of the colloquial manner and turned it to account in lyrics for Bossa Nova, but I don't think that he could be as gracefully colloquial as Miss Bishop is in the last two lines of the sonnet. Venicius says of himself and the cows: Nostodos animais, sem comas, saum, nem huma, mijamos, hem comum nume festa de espuma. Literally rendered, "we all, animals, without any commotion, urinate together in a festival of spray." This isn't exactly graceful. Elizabeth Bishop has it: "All of us, animals, unemotionally partake together of a pleasant piss." In the last line, she has had to abandon Venicius's internal rhyming, such a feature of Portuguese, comum, numa, espuma, but the alliteration that she substitutes, more common in English, is very deft. A small triumph of poetic discretion, I call it. The poet who has most deeply engaged Miss Bishop's imagination, Carlos Ramon de Andrade, comes from Minas Gerais, and in fact, his native village, Itabirito, is on the highway to Orpreito, where she has owned an old house for at least a decade. Nearby is Itabira, a large mountain of iron ore that has been extensively mined. As anybody can see, just by driving through the countryside, life could be austere. Although Carlos Ramon has lived in Rio for many years, he is a former civil servant, he often writes about the place where he grew up, and I should think that it has contributed much to his strength as a writer. much to his strength as a writer. Miss Bishop has translated seven of his poems. In nineteen sixty-five, she brought out two early pieces in a light mood entitled Seven-Sided Poem and Don't Kill Yourself and Shenandoah. That same season, she published the poem called Travelling in the Family in Poetry. I think that from the beginning, this was recognized as one of those cases where a distinguished poem in one language becomes something more than a translation in another. It was soon included in the Penguin Anthology, Latin American Writing Today, in nineteen sixty-seven, and Robert Penn Warren used lines from it as the epigraph to his poem sequence, Audubon a Vision. Now one can read it in the Brooks-Lewis-Warren Anthology of American Literature, and in a sense, has been naturalized. In the poem, the shade of Carlos Drummond's father is his guide, but his dream of the past is hesitant. In the desert of Itabira, the shadow of my father took me by the hand, so much time lost. But he didn't say anything. It was neither day nor night, a sigh of passing bird, but he didn't say anything. The movement of the poem is a painful recreation of a family and its failures of love, but something has endured that the poet yearns to possess. Through eight stanzas that refrain, "But he didn't say anything," draws out the painful disclosures. The poem is three-quarters over before the poet can say, "You. Only now do we know each other. Eyeglasses, memories, portraits flow, and the river of blood. Now the waters won't let me make out your distant face, distant by seventy years." And the reconciliation at the end is just as hesitant as the beginning. I felt that he pardoned me, but he didn't say anything. The waters cover his moustache. The family, Itabira, all. The longish companion poem, Amazó, The Table, confronts the subject more directly. Here the family, ruled by the patriarch, assembled in the poet's imagination again. Now the tone is variously humorous, defiant, loving. The dining table itself is a symbol of the family's existence. And now the table replete is bigger than the house. We talk with our mouths full, we call each other names, we laugh, we split our sides, we forget the terrible inhibiting respect. This poem moves through three hundred and fifty-three lines without any stanzaic break, as though the obsessive quality of the subject could never permit the speaker to pause. As an occasional guest at Minero family dinners, I've been astonished by the huge amounts of food, the good-natured intensity of the arguments, the endless hours that people could spend at the table. I think Elizabeth Bishop has lived through this experience many times. Her translation is deeply felt. More recently, she has filled out the picture, as it were, with three shorter poems from Carlos Drummond in the Anthology of Brazilian Poetry that she edited with Emmanuel Brasil in nineteen seventy-two. Taken together, her versions of this poet's work are a considerable achievement. This brief account of Elizabeth Bishop at a certain period of her career, of course, admits a great deal. In addition to a great Brazilian cycle, she wrote several of her Nova Scotia poems during these years, and this is a locale to which, of course, she has returned imaginatively, if not actually, many times. The world of her poetry is large, although it differs from that of Wallace Stevens in some ways. I think that she, more than anybody else today, has the same humanist vision of north and south, the seasonal round, the imagination creating its order, sometimes in most discouraging circumstances. It is a great pleasure to be a contemporary of hers. Thank you.
It is probably appropriate that this special session is occurring just after, during such times as Christmas or Hanukkah. For, as with any celebration of light, a large part of the joy is in the sheer anticipation of the event. Such has been the case with the many preparations which have resulted in this very evening, and the evening's not over. As with other special times, when they come to pass, there's usually an emotional letdown, not to mention a physical exhaustion, when things are finally done. When Santa Claus, for instance, has come and gone, it is, so to speak, all over, at least until next year. I am sure that some of us will experience the same disappointment when tonight, after a few moments, Speculam Musica sounds their final note, and for this session this evening, it's over. And indeed, after the performance of A Mirror on Which to Dwell, it will be over for tonight for honoring Miss Bishop and her work and her life on this particular occasion in this particular way. And yet, I am convinced that the impact which Elizabeth Bishop has had on American letters, indeed on world literature, will never allow many of us to say, "That's all there is." Let us then cherish this evening and its coming event, as one cherishes any celebration, knowing that after the festival itself is finished, the light will not only have come, but will also continue and continue. Let me make one announcement before our ten-minute intermission and the performance of the music. Evora Vasquez reminds us that the winter issue of Books Abroad will be devoted entirely to essays on Elizabeth Bishop. There will be ten minutes now, and then an introduction of Speculam Musica and the composer
... Oh, the universe is empty. She's tired to go to hell. And she hates her body of water for a mirror on which to dwell. ... That's what it's like. Where the shadow of the earth is always white. Where the shadow of the earth is always white. ..............................